Good afternoon. We're going to start the special meeting for Akron City Council to order at this time. Our clerk will read the roll.
Bolden, Boys.
Aye.
Honor. Davis.
Aye.
DeShager.
Aye.
Fusco. Garrett. Hannah.
Aye.
Kammer.
Aye.
Lombardo.
Aye.
McHittrick.
Aye.
Omobian.
Aye.
Somerville.
Aye.
And Madam President, Councilwoman Sharon Connor is joining us online now. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. We do have five items up for public hearing and we'll have our clerk read in item number one.
Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, October 20th, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance approving the Commerce Park Drive redevelopment plan. This ordinance, this notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on October 4th and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning October 1st.
Good afternoon. The proposed Commerce Park Drive redevelopment area is located just north of the intersection of Home Avenue and Evans Avenue. The redevelopment area consists of six parcels occupying approximately 8.5 acres of land. The proposed redevelopment area contains three commercial buildings, adjacent parking areas, and vacant lots along Commerce Park Drive. In August 2024, Agnemoto Health and Nutrition purchased the existing warehouse located at 929 Home Avenue, and the owners are planning to construct in addition to the existing structure at this location. The area is zoned U5, ordinary industry, and zoning will not be changed. The Commerce Park Drive redevelopment plan contains a description of properties and a statement of objectives for the project area. The establishment of the redevelopment plan gives the city the ability to utilize tax increment financing under provisions of the Ohio revised code. Planning staff and planning commission recommend approval.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak in favor or against item number one?
Could you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say I do. Thank you.
So, so we're going to begin with those who wish to speak in favor. And if, and if you're wishing to, if you're wishing to speak, we're going to ask that you be sworn in, okay, first.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before you begin, if you could just give us your name.
Sure. My name is Minister Nathan Arons.
Thank you.
Okay, so for public hearing, October 20, 2025 ordinance approving the Commerce Park Drive Development Plan, making necessary findings in connection with the declaring an emergency. Who owns the property? It says owner's property. I know it may be protected. Forgive me if I'm asking for too much information, but is it corporate property or is it owned by the county?
Any questions that you might have, we can get those answers to you after, but if you want to speak in favor, you're more than welcome to use your time to do so.
Well, I can't speak in favor of something that I don't have enough information about, so I was asking the council to possibly give me a little more information with, with limitation.
Okay, thank you. So after the meeting, we're more than happy to get that answer for you, okay?
Okay, may, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of item number one?
I'm just going to reemphasize again, for those who weren't present earlier, I am in support of this. Contingent upon it being beneficial for people also in transitions of life. We need more employment versus incarceration. We want this development process to be inclusive and not exclusive of people who have a past. Whether it be incarceration, whether it be mental illness, whether it be homelessness, whatever it is, we need to be building some limits. We need a new trajectory. We need to take people higher. We don't want racial barriers and bondages. We don't want hindrances against women of all colors. And we want to make sure that you're fair and equal in the process for the community. We're going to have rich, poor, and middle-class people that may want to do some visions with you, and I would like for you to make sure that this is inclusive because it's time for a new trajectory. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Reverend Pamela Pena, Apostleat.
Thank you. If there's no one else wishing to speak in favor or against, we will close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with the suspension of the rules. Kammer.
Aye.
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 Hannah.
Aye.
For the committee is favorable.
Thank you so much.
Asking for suspension of the rules.
Are there any objections to suspension of the rules? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
I know that the ward council representative is in favor of this, and this agreement is the beginning process in terms of assembling parcels and, and preparing this for, as was mentioned, TIF. All of these rules that we go, that we have to abide by, as well as the state that gives us the permission to do a TIF in, in hiring and et cetera, those are regu- highly regulated, and I'm happy to talk to the gentleman after the meeting. It is public record who the ownership is, private ownership at this time, but we will be seeing more legislation as time goes on here. But the recommendation of the committee is favorable. We're asking for passage.
Thank you so much. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 11 to zero. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, October 20th, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to establish a group home at 7989 Stadleman Avenue. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on October 4th and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning October 1st.
Mr. Antonucci.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of council. Harmony House is requesting permission to establish a group home for up to six individuals because the zoning code only permits up to five unrelated individuals in a single-family home. A conditional use is necessary. Harmony House purchased a three-story house in July of 2025. The dwelling built in 1920 contains two bathrooms and six bedrooms. The dwelling will house up to five adult individuals, typically male, aged from 18 to 24. The sixth adult would be a live-in resident advisor. Petitioners stated that the potential residents of 799 Stadleman Avenue will be those who have successfully completed Harmony House programs but are still, still struggling to pay fair market rent. Harmony House, an active nonprofit partner in the Summit County Continuum of Care, operates several housing sites across Akron. A single-family dwelling on Stadleman Avenue will allow Harmony House to continue their core mission of providing safe, stable housing for young adults in the Akron community who are homeless or at risk of homelessness without negatively impacting the neighborhood, and the planning staff and planning commission recommend approval subject to the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing, just going to ask all those who wish to speak if you'll please stand at this time so you may be sworn in by our clerk.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to begin with those who wish to speak in favor.
Thank you again for the opportunity to come and speak before council. My name is Carla McDay. I am the founder and executive director of Harmony House. Harmony House is a nonprofit organization founded in 2009. We've been operable since 2014. We have several beds of shelter throughout the community. Last night, we slept approximately 34 youth in our transitional and emergency shelter beds, and then another 10 youth in rapid rehousing, which is their own apartment with their own lease. The reality of our situation in Akron is that the housing market is not accessible, not affordable, and oftentimes not available to the youth that we serve. Harmony House was designed as a result of my tenure at Children's Services. I worked there 18 years and assisted youth who were exiting the foster care system. What we found with foster youth is that they were returning to the system without a safety net, oftentimes homeless. So as a result, I founded the organization. In the time we have been operating since 2014, we may have called the police three times. We don't typically have problems. We have a structured environment, and the youth come together and live in what's called a co-living or a shared living environment. Co-living is a trend in many of our larger cities throughout the country because people simply can't afford the cost of housing. They're being outpaced by the, by the market, so, or outpriced rather in the market. So our request today is very simple. It is to do what we've already been doing. We already housed five unrelated people in one house. We're requesting to house one more person because we purchased a larger home. We have a donor who has assisted us recently in the last 60 days. We have purchased six additional homes, and we have about 56 or 58 additional beds. We want to partner with Akron to help eradicate the problem of homelessness, and we need your help and support. This problem today, to add one more person to a five-bedroom house, is just a microcosm of what we really will be facing in the future. So we have to come up with some strategic responses. This morning, I told the council that if the music changes, so should the dance. And that's an African proverb, but it's true. The music in the housing market has changed, and we have to try to make every effort to keep up. So I'm just asking that you honor the request and know that we'll want to help you in the future with dealing with our housing issues. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. McDay.
As you all are fully aware, I'm always in support of making sure people have a place to live. I did hear something, though, just a few minutes ago. I didn't hear earlier, man. Emphasis on males. We need to have more women supporting females. We help males. We want the males to. But our, our young ladies are losing away in many ways. I'm in support of the group home. As I said earlier, I don't want, because it's labeled a group home, those people targeted in the community as dangerous. I heard one of the United States presidents, not recently, say that people who are mentally ill shouldn't have guns because they're dangerous. Many people are mentally ill because of guns, and that's a very horrible stigma to put on mental illness and people with mental illness. Some people are mentally ill from being in war and many other places. And as I stated earlier, the group home does not have to be a permanency. As a matter of fact, I met a, a bank manager not too long ago who has a, a partner friend who lived in a group home and ultimately got on his feet. So he's not in the group home any longer, and now he's working, and maybe I can introduce you to him, to get people stability through the group home process. Once again, we need to be getting to the root. Jesus cursed the fig tree because it wasn't producing, and He cursed it at the root. We don't need curses on people's lives because their burdens are in the root, and they don't have the stability in their lives. I would love for my sister here to, I don't know her name, to have a group home and bring people together, but I don't want that a permanent fix if it does not need to be. I want the church, the business arena, the courts, the community, the council, whoever, to wrap their arms around this woman. As I said earlier, wise woman builds her house, Proverbs 14:1, and a foolish one plucks it down with her own hands, and she's not operating in foolishness or folly. I want you to make sure she has everything she needs. Network her to make sure these people have food, adequate clothing. This is not a hotel. This is not, it doesn't have to be a permanent thing. Some people need to be in there because they need to be healed. But for the grace of God, it could have been me. So let's not ever believe that something is just as casual or as common as just a quick fix. This lady is going to need a lot of support, and I pray that this council, the community, will wrap your arms around her and these people, these young people. We don't need to lose this generation. Thank you.
Thank you, Apostleat. If there's no one else wishing to speak in favor or against, we'll close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Kammer.
Aye.
Leonard.
Aye.
Aye.
Hannah.
Aye.
Excuse me. Yes, the report of the committee is favorable. Asking for suspension of the rules. Playing department's in favor. The commission was in favor, and I know that the ward council person is in favor as well, Jan Davis. So with all that, recommending approval this evening.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilwoman Davis, do you have any comments?
Heidi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to say Ms. McDay is really doing great work with the Harmony House. I have one, maybe about two or three blocks from me, and I appreciate the work that she's doing to, you know, just have our young people have somewhere to be housed. And I appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you. So the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 11 to zero. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, October 20th, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to establish a three-unit apartment at 892 Delia Avenue. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on October 4th and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning October 1st.
Mr. Antonucci.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of council. Brittany Beck wishes to retain the property as a three-unit apartment use. While the property is considered legal non-conforming two-family, conditional use is needed for the three unit to be in compliance. While three, the three-story structure was built in 1928, it currently contains three apartments with one unit on each floor. The petitioner purchased the property in February of '23 under the impression it had always been a legal non-conforming three-unit dwelling and updated the interior of the structure. The dwelling is stacked bungalow with front porches with access to the units from two doors on the front facade. Renovations that have recently been made to each unit include new windows, floors, counters, cabinets, and updated plumbing and electrical. A new roof and gutters were also installed, and all three units have a separate electric panel and hot water tank. The petitioner has made renovations, these renovations, and has invested significant resources to rehabilitate the property. Other multifamily dwellings exist within the immediate neighborhood. An additional third unit would not contribute significantly to increasing density or overcrowding while continuing to provide needed housing. However, the Housing Division manager has indicated that the third-floor ceiling height is an issue for the third unit to be in compliance with the housing code. If the third unit ceiling height can be brought into compliance, the planning staff can support retention of the three-family dwelling, and planning staff and planning commission recommend approval subject to these conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone wishing to speak in favor or against item number three? Thank you. Apostleat, you can approach the podium.
I pray that the gentleman that was here earlier has some type of peace and resolve, council president. The scripture says that the outside looks good, but the inside's filthy. It's time out for things that's looking good from what we see with our eye. Yes, I want housing. But I was rushed out of a homeless shelter into bad housing. From that bad housing to another bad housing situation. And I had bad housing for 23 years because bad inspections got passed, favors got done. But for grace and mercy, I'm not dead right now because the last time I was here in July, the mold was so bad in my body that I had perspiration pouring out of my face. My face was twisted, my mouth, my skin was dark, my face was swollen because the city passed inspections. Time out for this. Looks good to the eye. But it's time to do some inward work. We have mold issues. We have lead issues. We're in a hurry too much. There were jokes cracked about me when I called for an emergency, for an ambulance when I was here at the council meeting in July, which is not funny. And they were not told that it was because of mold. We're in a hurry. Too much of a hurry. We have bad water in places where people feel like they don't have to do it because you need a place to live. People in disabled housing, people with mental illnesses, people who are homeless, you all are not doing what you're supposed to do to make sure that their housing is adequate. It doesn't need to be for wealthy white America only. It needs to be for everybody. I want this building to not just meet conditional use, but community use. That was roulette with my life. And only one, two people from this council called me to check on me to see if I was okay. I came here living in a car. These are people's lives, and I don't care how much money they give you to, to pay the taxes. These are people's lives, and I'm not going to have any blood on my hands because of the government. Yes. But don't do favors with your friends. Get these people some housing. Fair and equal housing. My lungs are damaged now. And my doctors are trying to find a cure for my situation because I was brushed under the rug and called crazy for telling on a man and giving bad housing. You make sure there's a You make sure this apartment is feasible somewhere you'll live in. There was a movie, I believe it was Danny DeVito was in it, and he had a slum landlord, and the judge made him live in the apartment. You make sure this apartment is someplace you want to live in. Your children, your grandchildren, your spouse. Stop giving people just anything, throwing it at them, expecting them to just accept it because the government gave it to them. Yes. Let's do what's right. We don't want to have filth on the inside and looking good on the outside. We can't afford to lose another life to bad housing.
Thank you, Apostolate. At this time, we're going to close our public hearing. If you wish to speak, you must stand, and you must be sworn in first, okay? So when I call at the beginning for those who wish to speak, that's your time to stand, okay? It's okay. Yes. And you have been sworn in already because this is your second time speaking, so.
Okay. So authorizing a conditional use to establish a three-unit apartment at 892 Delia Avenue. I've been homeless. I've been dealing with homelessness for quite some time, in and out of programs. I just got off of parole and probation within the last two years, and I'm learning how to not be a part of recidivism and transition into the community and make pro-social choices and engage in pro-social activity, or at least the conditions. My thoughts on this is to give somebody a house or to have use of a development to house people. I've been in houses where they're overran by drugs, paraphernalia, things like that. I know I bank with the Federal Credit Union. And in order to bank with that credit union, I have to worship or live in those grounds. It's an ordinance there. I believe maybe if you want to have an establishment and see success in it, or to see growth that would help the community, I think maybe it should be funded or founded or overseen through a religious sect. Or maybe if the council drew up an ordinance that maybe required it to, it's probably through HUD, to require it to have a funding or a requirement of religious, I don't know the word, just to be of a religious program or, you know, something that's pro-God or, you know. So with that being said, you could implement caseworkers or counselors or things like that that would actually help the people that use the development that could give back to the community. You know, maybe even teaching, giving lessons to earn a license. And then you can offer peace officers in the community, you know, under the old constitution. If you're an ordained minister and you live, or you're technically known as a peace officer. I'm not sure what amendment that is. So to have conditional use to it, I think there should be something drawn up to be more specific on to what statute as far as what would help our community and the people of our community.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, we're going to close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Kammer?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Boys?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Report of the committee is favorable. We're asking for passage this evening. It was brought to the attention today during the meeting that the Housing Division of our city is aware and has inspected this property. They have some concerns before a permit is provided for occupancy. They're going to have to correct that. So that's going to have to be corrected on the third floor. The ceilings are too low. So that's one of the conditions that's going to have to be met. So with that, we're recommending approval this evening.
Okay. Thank you so much. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes eleven to zero. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the council of the city of Akron on Monday, October 20, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 p.m. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to establish a parking area consisting of crushed asphalt grindings at 1100 Triplet Boulevard. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on October 4 and on the Akron City Council website beginning October 1.
Mr. Antonucci?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of council. Christopher Wright, the owner of Pro Car Associates, wishes to use asphalt grindings as a pavement surface for the storage lot expansion. The petitioner intends to install the asphalt grindings on the bulk of the remaining unpaved portion of his lots to within ten feet of the sidewalk along Triplet Boulevard. The area is to be used as a storage area for vehicles waiting to be serviced and prior to pickup. The petitioner states that additional storage is needed because of newly acquired business from some car dealers that will be sending several vehicles at a time for service. Because the lot is fairly level, washout of the material should not be an issue. Further, because the surface will be used primarily for static storage of vehicles, dust production should be minimal. The zoning code does, however, require that storage areas be screened by a solid fence or wall. And the planning staff recommends that a solid fence be installed ten feet from the right-of-way and that the area in front of it be landscaped in accordance with code requirements. Provided that the fencing and landscaping are installed according to an approved plan, the planning staff and planning commission recommend approval subject to the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone wishing to speak in favor or against? Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say aye do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, this evening. My name is Christopher Wright with Pro Car Associates. I really appreciate taking the time to review this with me and meet with me this evening and give me a chance to talk to you. That building's been in my family since 1976, so it means something to me. My dad built our business there, okay? Started in 1969. And so we had acquired the two lots next to it over time. There was two houses there. And one was rented out, and one was actually a concrete business at one time that was owned by a friend of ours. So those houses have been gone and torn down. And the land that was there, we couldn't use for anything because we couldn't park cars on the grass. It violates ordinances. And so started to remove the dirt and stuff, not realizing I couldn't just take the dirt out and put stuff down. That was my mistake, and my apologies to this committee for doing that without knowing I needed permits and things to do that the proper way. So I'm working with the city. I got everything arranged now so we can get the asphalt grindings once everything's approved. And then a fence put up with privacy and all that and shrubbery and greenery in the front, so it looks nice. But in the meantime, I got to do the asphalt grindings because I can't afford a hard surface because I got to put a roof on the building and do some other work on the building. So I'm just asking for some leniency and allowing me to do this until I have the funds to do the rest. And I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Kammer?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Boys?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Report of the committee is favorable. This particular proposal has, I believe, eight conditions to it, and it will be fenced. And I know that councilperson Hannah has had discussions about this particular property with the petitioner as well as the planning department. And with all that, we're recommending approval this evening.
Thank you. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes eleven to zero. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the council of the city of Akron on Monday, October 20, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 p.m. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to establish a beauty salon at 483 Howe Street. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on October 4 and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning October 1.
Mr. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Bianca Robinson is requesting permission to establish a beauty salon in her dwelling. The petitioner will offer hair care along with the services such as facials, waxing, and eyebrow tinting. She will be the sole proprietor and anticipates having between two to four customers a day. All services rendered will be by appointment only with operating hours Tuesday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Parking for a single vehicle is located along the east side of the dwelling and is accessible from Howe Street. The petitioner is a state-of-Ohio licensed cosmetologist and esthetician. One goal of the Land Use and Development Guide Plan is to guide the location of new retail development so that it will be convenient to residents served and will have minimal impact on adjacent properties. The client entrance and parking area on the east side of the house abuts a non-buildable vacant lot. Also, since the sole proprietor will render services to one client at a time and by appointment only, the low-activity retail use should not cause any noticeable increase in activity to abutting properties. And both the planning staff and planning commission recommend approval subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone wishing to speak in favor or against?
Could you please raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say aye do. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll begin with those who wish to speak in favor.
Hi, I'm Bianca Robinson. I just wanted to say thank you for your time, and I'm really excited to get started.
Thank you.
I love the fact that this young lady is trying to do something for others. And I hope you pass this resolution. As I said earlier, it's time for doing something new. I ask that you would support this young lady. She could be doing anything. But she's helping to build up the esteem and the care of others. I ask you to make sure she has everything she needs so she doesn't have any violations. Once again, I ask that you would work in conjunction with the courts, the church, and others. Because when we come out of domestic violence, when we come out of situations, we need help. We're spending a lot of money on things that are not really needing to be spent on, but some of us struggle just to get up in the morning after we've been through violence, after we've been through loss. And I want you to wrap your arms around her and work with her. And when we go to get things done, repairs done, like my ears torn from domestic violence, it's called cosmetic. But we have a young lady who took the time to get paperwork, to be a licensed cosmetologist, to get people's hair. You'll be surprised how a woman feels when her hair looks good. And our children's hair looks good from going to a beauty salon. I'm asking you to encourage other women and other beauticians to wrap your arms and partner with her to make this happen, not be jealous of her and set traps for her and be on the phone with all that foolishness. But it's time for something new, everybody. Some folk are struggling. I just don't happen to struggle. I'm an overcomer. But some folk are struggling. And find a way to find some finances for her so she can have options to donate some time and services and get some supplies that she needs. We have the money. We spend it on marijuana and vaping and gambling and all these other things and guns. Let's find some money to help her beautify somebody's life. And don't forget about her, too. Don't forget to give her something special for her. Not just because she sees other people's needs, but she's somebody, too. And make sure she has all the financing and grants that she needs through this city to make sure her operation works. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Apostolate. We're going to close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Kammer?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Boys?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Report of the committee is favorable. We're asking for passage. Yes, this is, clearly, there is a number of conditions that must be met. And we wish this new entrepreneur nothing but luck. Hopefully, everything's going to work out for them. And it's agreed to meet all of our conditions. Recommend approval this evening.
Thank you. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes eleven to zero.
If there's nothing else coming before this body at this time, meeting adjourned.
Council will meet in regular session at 6:30. Thank you.